Who's gonna call the meeting to order?
I don't know, what do we do?
Are you the vice chair?
Huh?
Are you the vice chair?
Am I?
I think so.
I have no idea. Lots of things that I have no idea about. Alright, well, let's see here. I guess I have to remember how this is done. It's been a long time since I've been chair or president of anything. Call the meeting to order. Do we have the approval of the minutes from the May fifteenth meeting? Has everyone looked at the minutes for the May fifteenth meeting?
They weren't included in the packet.
Yeah, they're not in there.
It was, there was a lot of notes.
That's what it says, we'll be providing it for the next meeting.
Took, took too long to have them ready for the meeting, so. They'll be presented at the next meeting.
Okay. And then I need to read the public input. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the Planning Commission that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The Planning Commission may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input session to assure that each individual presentation is heard. The Planning Commission may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time of the Planning Commission takes up each specific agenda item. Does the public have any input? Yes, sir.
I have a handout, do I give that to Mandy, or hand it out myself, or how do we get this to you folks?
Mandy, what's the best way to do it?
Sure, you can hand to me.
You're kind of semi-bandit there, so.
And it's a non-agenda item?
Yes, it's a non-agenda item.
For starters, I'd like to shout a thank you to our chair who passed on. I think that's appropriate at this time to acknowledge someone like that. And then I'm gonna vet myself really quickly for you. My name is Kent Swatzky. I sat in those chairs when I was probably twenty-five years old. I'm sixty-nine now. My whole life's been to deal with, with the process you go through. And so I've had, worked with many, many certified planners, worked with the general plan for many months, have many years in Humboldt County General Plan Update, and also housing element, being a contractor and doing development. These are the kind of things I work with on a daily basis. I started out here, my first house I bought when I was nineteen here in Blue Lake, and we did, we did the affordable housing projects, and one I kind of regret. We built, Blue Lake Enterprises was the name of our corporation. And back in the day, we built the tenplex, we built the fourplex down by the, by the, by the park down there. The tenplex should have been two fourplexes in hindsight to see what the rural atmosphere we have here. Russo, Robert Russo, the Russo family were partners with us. They built the fiveplex up there, and of course, they did, did the trailer park and all. Those are the people that I work with, and that's my level of expertise. My, my concerns are regarding the situation the city's in now, and it's not on your agenda. But you, you need a general plan update to make your general plan consistent with all the changes that you've had over the years. And that hasn't been done, and it's been knowledge by staff that they don't have the money to do it. But before we move forward, that's your foundation, being a contractor. You don't put your plywood down in the dirt. You start with concrete and you build up, so you have a foundation. So I highly recommend that you folks consider doing a general plan update, incorporating all these things. And it's called a consistency review. And some of the example of what I gave you there are inconsistencies between what's been adopted in the general plan. And in other words, as a developer, I wish to go in and I should be able to look at your general plan on your website, find it easily, and I should be able to tell whatever land use is out here, so if I want to invest a million or ten million in your community, I'm able to do so and understand what I can do. So until that's done, I really don't see where you can move forward on other topics, which we'll talk about a little bit later here in the meeting. I strongly recommend the city get grant money or whatever it is to bring that all up to phase. Just so you know, I didn't even think I have it in there. But one of the things that you shall do something regarding the passenger railroad that's supposed to be delivered to town. That's how far out of date that is, eighty-six was when it was done, and that's a shall. So I don't think that's gonna happen, but until we get those things updated, it's really hard for you folks to have the foundation to do the planning that you need to do and make your decisions in a good manner. And also, lastly here, I wish to comment on what you do when you find out a project. You have findings. You say, "We find either for the project to be no project, or we find for the project to be what staff recommends." But those findings are something, I'm gonna talk about those later with specificity and how that's done. And you have full latitude on those findings. As long as you can find findings, then you can make whatever decision, and if you've been told differently, I believe that would be incorrect. That latitude totally belongs to you folks, as long as you can find, make the findings. And of course, those findings either way should be able to hold up in court. That's the final determination, you know, if somebody challenges your decision. Thank you for my opportunity to speak today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Other members of the public with input? Related to the agenda?
My name's Elise Skovany, and I just wanted to acknowledge the man that's missing in the room, Mr. Earl Eddy, and, and acknowledge that he volunteered for the city for many, many years and was very devoted to his position here on the, on the commission. And so I'd just like to acknowledge that and thank him and ask everyone to join me in a minute of silence for Earl.
Thank you, Elise, and thank you for the beautiful bouquet as well. It's a very nice... Yep. Yeah, I'm just gonna break from the planning agenda, just enough to say he was a good friend, not to mention a member of this Planning Commission. He was very active in lots and lots of different things, as you suggested. He was a fine man, fine human being. Okay, with that, can I have an approval for the, a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve. I'm flunking it.
Okay. Any discussion? Alright, call for the question. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Agenda is approved. Okay, so let me read this through here. Moves to number four. We need to vote on a chair and a vice chairman. And I don't know how this proceeds, because it's been so long since we did it under replace Rick. I'm not quite sure how that's done. Do we take nominations and then?
It's typically been pretty fluid, just amongst yourself. You know, if there's someone who, you know, would like to do it. Sometimes it's the person who's not in the room that gets nominated, so.
Right.
I think it's up to you guys to kind of make that decision.
I guess we'll start with, is there anyone on the commission that would like to become chair of the commission? Would choose to be chair of the commission?
I nominate you, Bob.
I knew you were gonna do that.
But I'll nominate myself to be vice, since you're moving up.
Okay, I just need to make it clear about one really important thing. I'm gonna miss August and September, and it's possible I will also miss, miss July. So if having the chair of the Planning Commission gone for two to three meetings in the foreseeable future, then we should think about that. But if it's not a problem, if, if it can move to the vice when I'm gone, then I will do it.
So I'm gonna have some of the same conflicts. Just 'cause it's busy season for work.
We wouldn't have a quorum anyway, so it's not an issue at that point?
Right.
Right, if both of us are gone. It's true.
Unless somebody else wants to take that vice chair position, or chair position.
I'm open to either one. I don't have any strong feelings either way.
Either one, why?
I could be vice chair is what I would be most comfortable with, but I'm happy to be chair, but yeah, I don't.
Is there anyone who's gonna make all the meetings?
The next ones that are listed, I can make. I don't, I mean, it's a long, it's a longer term than just the next three months, so I don't know.
Of course.
You know, but we shouldn't let that deter necessarily.
So it sounds like we have two possibilities, you and me? Because you just said be vice chair.
Yes, I mean, summers are always challenging for me, right? So it's just kind of how it falls, and I can't plan some of it. But I'm willing to step up and do it as long as everyone realizes that that's the case.
Right, yeah, right, right.
You know, obviously, I'll try to arrange it. I mean, I know August is gonna be really hard for me, because I'll be working in Alaska for most of August, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna even be in the county. I'll be in Maine for August and September, and I have a previous engagement in the Bay Area for next month. And I'm trying to see if I can get out of that or not, and I haven't found out. So that's my circumstance. And this has always been a circumstance for me, because I travel a lot. What did you guys?
Yeah, if we don't have a quorum for any of these meetings, we obviously can do special meetings, just to make sure we have a quorum.
Okay. Well...
So I guess if any, unless you guys have any other stronger opinions, then?
No, I think that's fine, because if we don't have, if we can't have a meeting anyway, it's not an issue.
Right.
So I guess it's between us.
Chair, it's okay, so chair and vice chair.
So I think we need to actually vote on it? Does someone actually need to make a motion?
Public comment on this topic, or is that?
I have no idea.
No, not whatsoever. It's just an action. I mean, if you guys want to entertain public comment, feel free, but...
So on the last board I served on, when we had a vote, well, we don't really, I'm not running against anybody, so we don't have to leave their room.
Just take a vote on it.
It's just an action, so.
If you wanna have public comments, if you don't have that issue, you can go ahead and make a public comment on it before you vote.
Any public comments on this?
If you have a motion.
I, I appreciate you taking public comment, any agendized item. You may want legal advice on it. I attend hundreds of meetings, and that's a requirement. I appreciate your, your willingness to serve on this. I don't think there's any problem, this is why I mentioned earlier, to get your fifth council member up here is imperative, and it, it, I don't think it's part of your agenda, but I think maybe you, on the side or something, should ask the, the city council and the city manager to move as quickly as possible to enable you to get quorum so that you can continue to function. Really appreciate the willingness to serve, and I appreciate, you know, the, the schedules and everything. I just, I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you for my opportunity.
Yep, thank you. Any others?
I just have to say, if we have Zoom, there might be an opportunity for the absent members to participate in meetings. Absences are important, and...
You get two?
It's a very high threshold to me to be able to do Zoom.
Yeah, the state passed new.
This is true, but it's possible to use it when you're out of state for work or something.
It's a community matter.
Okay, alright. Well, step forward. All those in favor of me being the chair and, and court being the vice chair?
Can, can you guys just make a motion?
We gotta make a motion, yeah.
Okay.
Motion to elect chair, vice chair.
Sure, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess we need a third, so I'll say aye.
Alright. My experience is the chair never gets to vote on anything, so. Yeah, alright, well, that's how we proceed. So that brings us to action item number five, or discussion item really, number five. Continue public hearing discussion. This is for application three-one-two dash one-six-one dash zero-one-five and zero-one-eight slash two-oh-two-three. Conventional use permit and site plan approval for Danco communities for development of a mixed-use project in the Powers Creek District that will include the construction of two buildings. They'll contain forty-three residential units, eighteen hundred, eighteen thousand, five hundred square feet of commercial space and common use areas. The two buildings will include the following: a three-story mixed-use building that will contain forty residential units consisting of thirty-six affordable units, three market-rate units, and a manager's unit on the upper floors, and a commercial space on the ground level and third floor, which in parenthetical is rooftop resident spa, resident, restaurant space, and B, a two-story mixed-use building with three live-work units. The project also proposes related site improvements that include access driveways, eighty vehicle parking spaces, forty-eight bicycle parking spaces, utility extensions, outdoor lighting, electric vehicle charging stations, stormwater management features, walkways, recreation improvements, traffic calming improvements, open space landscaping, and signage. The city will also be requiring offset improvements and/or development impact fees for the following: improvement of the creek trail, pedestrian improvements at the intersection of Taylor Way, Hatchery Road, and wastewater treatment system improvements. As allowed under the State Density Bonus Law, Government Code six-five-nine-one-five, the project will be requesting concessions for development standards in the zoning code that may include building height setbacks and off-street parking. The proposed development activity is defined as a project under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the city, as lead agency, is currently considering the appropriate level of environmental review for the project. And that goes to you then, Gary, right?
Yeah.
Is the city will present their report?
Yeah, so there was a brief staff report in your packet for this item that essentially provides a summary of things that have occurred to date. So really, this, this item's on the agenda to allow staff to provide an update to the commission and the public, and also receive public comments during an informational public hearing. So that's, that's why this is on the agenda. So as summarized in the staff report, it, you know, identifies when they submit an application in April of this year. That provides some photographs of the site, both currently and historically. Provides the project description that you just noted. And then identifies, you know, when the city did referral comments, the various city departments and others in early April after receiving the application. As noted here, you know, we provided comments to the applicant, and they're still working on revisions to the plans, project description, so that we have sufficient information to move the project forward, to write the staff report, to conduct, you know, SEQA analysis and things of that nature. It also notes in here that we did a field visit with California Department of Fish and Wildlife last Friday. Met with them at City Hall and then visited the site. I believe they'll be providing some comments as a follow-up to that meeting. And then there's a section in the staff report on SEQA identifying that, you know, this project requires a conditional use permit from the city as well as site plan approval. Those are discretionary reviews, and so under SEQA, it would be defined as a project. And when an agency determines that an activity is a project under SEQA, it would take usually three steps. First is determining whether the project falls under a statutory categorical exemption from SEQA. On prior agendas, as well as a public hearing notice, the city had identified that the project was found to be exempt per the infill exemption. That's where staff was at that time, but we're still reviewing the studies. There's subsequent kind of site visits or field surveys that have been done. Obviously, talking with some of the agencies, considering public comments. So we're still in the process of determining whether the project would be exempt or whether an initial study should be prepared for the project. So if the staff determines the project's not exempt, then we would prepare an initial study. And that's to determine whether the project might result in significant environmental effects, and most importantly, significant and unavoidable environmental effects. If staff determines through the course of preparing initial study that mitigations are required for the project, then we would identify those in the initial study and would be recommending adoption of a mitigated negative declaration, as it's referred to. So as explained at the, the last hearing on May fifteenth, to assist the city in determining, you know, the appropriate level environmental review, we required a number of technical studies to be prepared by the applicant. They're listed here in the staff report, biological assessment, some emissions modeling, a cultural resource investigation, geotechnical investigation, soil and groundwater managed plan, and a transportation impact study. It should also be noted, there's other studies available that have been prepared in the past when the city was trying to prepare this land for development, things such as a Phase One environmental site assessment, also a site investigation where soil and groundwater sampling was done. Those documents are available on the city's website under the Powers Creek District page. I think off to the left, where it lists kind of Botawatt Community Project documents. So as I noted, we're reviewing the studies, conducting additional field visits, surveys, considering public comment and the like to arrive at determination of the appropriate level of environmental review for the project. So at the last meeting, May fifteenth, based on the comments received from the public, the Planning Commission recommended that a town hall meeting be held before this project was brought back to the Planning Commission, as the commission had continued that May fifteenth hearing to tonight. And based on that recommendation to the council and comments from the public, we held a town hall meeting last Monday on June twelfth. And essentially, staff presented information about the Powers Creek District and a little bit about the Botawatt Community Project, and then the applicant Danco communities also presented some information about their project. And then the second portion of the meeting was a question and answer session where staff answered a number of questions from the public. So that's essentially where we're at at this time. I would note, the future meeting that will be asking the Planning Commission to take action on this item is not known at this time, because we're still working with the applicant to provide sufficient information for a complete application, and we're still considering the appropriate level of environmental review. So for this item, we're recommending that you receive this staff report, providing an update on the permitting process for this project. You open the public hearing and take public testimony, close the public hearing, and then discuss the project and ask questions of staff. We're not asking you to continue this public hearing, as when it's determined what meeting action would occur at, we would renotice the project to the public. So in your packet, we have the current plans that were provided by the applicant's architects. These plans were presented at the town hall meeting on June twelfth to the public. Another item we also have is some written comments and email from Lisa Hoover commenting on the project. She wasn't able to attend the meeting, so I presented that under separate cover to the, to the Planning Commission, to be part of your packet. So that's all I have for the staff reports.
Okay.
Encourage you to open the item up for public comment.
Alright. Well, let's open it for public comment, and I'll just... Do we have a time limit here for each individual, or do we just gauge that as things progress? If it gets really hectic, then do it, yeah, that's right, right, do it.
You should keep it across the board.
Keep it across the board at three minutes?
Stay consistent.
Absolutely, yeah.
So make sure that you identify yourself, and if you live in Blue Lake or not, and let's proceed.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Unless you want more.
Right.
Thank you, Scott Fraser, Blue Lake, also a property owner in the incorporated city of Blue Lake. I would say that we should be thankful that we've had so many opportunities to visit with you, but it's somewhat confusing, because this project has not followed the linear process that is typical, where a developer has a project, they develop plans and specifications, they bring them to you for your review, you determine whether anything else is needed, and then it goes to the city council. This is the second time we've had the chance to talk to you about things that aren't ready to be talked about. The biological assessment has recommendations that have not been fully followed or implemented, so it won't be ready for some time yet. I call attention to the fact that Planner Reese told you that they've met with Department of Fish and Wildlife recently, and that's great, because the riparian impacts of this project and past encroachments of the fire road and the trail that's currently in place don't meet the California Department of Fish and Wildlife guidelines, which are, you measure the protection zone from the top of the bank or the edge of the riparian zone and go a distance that's typically seventy-five feet. So I would like to ask that you have city staff develop a list of people like myself who've been at both your recent Planning Commission meetings, the Q and A meeting Monday night, who want to be notified of the date when this does come back, because clearly, we miss a few things. Like I missed when the DDR was adopted by the city after I'd been to the meetings when the negotiation efforts started on that. So this thing has drug on for a long time, and part of us aren't keeping current, because we have a life to lead. So thank you for your time.
Kent Swatzky of Blake. I gave you the packet a little bit, and there's some very relevant things in that packet regarding this particular project. I applaud, you know, I was down in Mexico when you had your meeting, and so I couldn't attend, I was not able to Zoom your meeting. That's part of the reason we're asking that these meetings, specifically the Planning Commission, and, and we be able to Zoom, you be able to Zoom. So I, I don't know, I don't think the city took any audio or visual record of the meeting that you, thank you for requesting them to have. And so you, you apparently have one written comment from somebody. Well, I would think you would be, hopefully, since we participated and you asked them, they facilitated, that this be brought to you. I don't know if any of you attended that particular meeting. There is, there are private parties who have recorded this meeting, and I highly recommend you take your time to see the fruits of your labor for public participation. As far as specific points, I will, I will not reiterate what Scott Fraser said. I'm glad to see a few of these things happening. That project was so not ready to come forward at that particular meeting while I was in Mexico. And that's, that's disturbing to me, that a project's being brought forward for approval without having what's needed. Now, I do SEQA. I fund SEQA litigation for environmental groups, that's one of my specialties. Mother Nature gave me a gift of having money, and so I use Mother Nature's money to do so. I'm quite familiar with SEQA. The process, in my opinion, that should have happened was this, when you created the ozone out there and did that particular zoning, which is part of this project, that should have had a full EIR at that time. Then, all you would be doing is tearing off of that existing EIR or coming up with a mitigated negative debt to address those issues. I still recommend that the city do an EIR for that whole area one time. Otherwise, the level of scrutiny I believe that's required of this project is an EIR in itself. And I did provide you some of the, of the comments. When you, when you created the ozone, I believe is in there, you said, "Well, we're gonna deal, deal with SEQA later, project by project." In my opinion, that's very flawed. SEQA wants overall comprehensive cumulative effects of all the projects you will do. Otherwise, you end up with not assessing those, and that violates, I think, the letter of what SEQA's all about. Specifically, you'll notice in the plan there, I think there's twenty-five hundred square foot on the bottom floor level that, in my opinion, is, is ancillary residential use. I don't believe that's permitted. There's no floor plan for the live-work particular part, which is, which was added to the project, you know, last minute here. So that, I don't, you know, I, I question, those things are not done yet. Hopefully, you will get a complete package. Hopefully, it will be done, not, not for us on Friday before a Monday meeting, but a week or two, so that we can go through and review these documents in a timely manner. Appreciate your attention on this, and greatly appreciate your, your desire to have a town hall meeting. That was greatly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you.
Marty Granger, and I'm not real educated on all the details of this stuff, but... And I don't know that it makes any difference that we give our opinions, because we keep saying it. Many people besides me, just, "It's too big, it's too big," we say, but nothing happens about it. I, I thought that we were needing to have thirty-four units. And then I was odd that it got up to forty. I couldn't understand why, it's just such a big impact. And now I see forty-three, so it's growing. There's these units that are being built on Mondo Way that are considered, I believe, a Ford, no, not a Ford, market rate. So why can't they be, I don't know, it's just, to me, it's gotta be smaller, we keep saying that, but it doesn't help much to just say it, I guess.
Thank you.
Matt Watson, Blue Lake. I don't really have a comment. I just wanted to ask a question about ADA. I don't see the elevators on either side of the building, and I just want to, maybe I missed it somewhere, but somewhere online, if I could get the information about ADA compliance and elevators. If you want to reach out to the building, I think that's for ADA.
I'm just going to quickly enter, enter this. Isn't the elevator the X marked box on the left-hand side of the building?
What sheet are you looking at?
Uh, it would be.
A zero, A one, any of them. They all have the X on the left side.
Proposed main level plan. Yeah, that appears, and it would be an elevator.
That's what I see as an elevator, so just, just one elevator. Yeah, yeah. Someone else?
Hi, my name is Verta Pitts, and I am a Blue Lake resident. I just have a couple of questions and a couple of concerns. I have been having some pretty productive conversations with a representative of AEI the last few days, not over the weekend, but Friday and today. Here are some of the things that we have discussed. First of all, I wanted to make sure that they had a current and factual conceptual site plan, because the site plan that they had on their tests available on our website were not accurate, as they did not represent, have any representation of the live-work buildings. I was wondering if sampling has been performed. The soil and groundwater plan is a plan, and it is to be followed through. Has the testing been done, and where are the, the results for that, if so? The resource assessment, as was mentioned, doesn't have an accurate conceptual site plan, specifically riparian zone is photographed in that as not being affected by the project. In fact, the building will be sitting on top of it. Fire safety was addressed at the town hall meeting, which I could not attend due to a family emergency. There's one road in and one road out. I heard on the recording about using Pepe Johnston's property in an emergency, and I was just wondering if that's a contract we have with him. The commercial building, I do have concerns. It was recently introduced. I don't feel that there's been transparency to the community. This is being told to us that this is a mandated project, and if we don't do these certain things, we'll be, you know, hit hard with repercussions. But there's no need to have a giant commercial building down there. That's not part of our housing element or housing necessity. It's not low-income, and I, stop there on that. Was there geotechnical testing done on that building? Overall, my concern is the no-SEQA being performed and not looking at the cumulative effects. Sometimes a project this size could offer a ten-year projection. We're gifting funds for this project, and we do deserve to be fully informed, as do all commission members, and of course, our council. Are the two projects being combined? Is this just Danco low-income housing down there, or what is going on? Because it seems like it's more than one thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Landon, Blue Lake. I just want to thank the planning commission for listening to us, once again, as others have stated. You say things in the city council meetings, and it doesn't seem that we're being heard, or, or comments are being factored in. So, thank you, whatever you can do, and we appreciate the.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Janice. I was wondering, I haven't heard about the, well, first off, sorry for your loss, dear friend, dear girl. The state water quality board, do they come into play for any of this development? I know we have a sewer line that's going over the top of the creek, and I know that is going to need to be upgraded. I was surprised, I was on the council, I was surprised that it was such a small, zoomzy-looking pipe that was going across the creek. And I was wondering if that has been addressed, or it will be addressed.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I should say this. I'm Erin Corr from Blue Lake, and I don't know about the water source that goes to this new Danco low-income housing. But, so that you know, the city of Blue Lake has two sites for their water tanks. One is on a property that is owned by the city of Blue Lake that was taken years ago by eminent domain from Peter Busman, and the other one sits on my land. And the city of Blue Lake currently does not have a lease agreement with me. It expired years ago, and I'm struggling to get a lease agreement with the city again. So, that's all up in the air. We don't know what's going to happen with that, so that's something to take into consideration. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Few in the audience who haven't spoken. Don't hold back. That's the whole point of this. Okay, so I, I closed the public input part of, part of this, and we move on to the commission discussing it, correct?
Yeah, and then asking questions of staff if you'd like to do that.
So, clarification, I don't think this has ever come before us for approval.
No.
This?
No.
No.
Never, so this has never come before the planning commission for approval, this project. It's come before the commission informational only, so just to clear that up. There was never a meeting established where staff asked for approval for the project.
No, and in fact, tonight, there's no action item. It's not in the agenda to have an action item. It's informational only. And I'll just, go ahead.
Well, and I was just going to say, you know, in regards, you know, I think that at, at our last meeting, you know, we tried to be, or I personally, and I think the commission agreed, that we wanted to have the public have more opportunity to ask questions. So, I'm a little unclear on what the lack of linearity is. We're trying to provide as much information as possible about this project. And so, you know, having come two or three times to ask questions is, is, in my view, a benefit to you all, as well as us, so that we can get clarity on the project. And so, I, I hope that, you know, folks understand that.
We appreciate that. We appreciate the fact that later, when you have a complete packet, then we can see the project and comment that thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there were a number of comments made about, you know, not having complete plans and so forth. They're not here yet. It's not something that's been presented to the commission, and I don't believe the city has completely seen anything that could be called completed plans. So, in terms of a lot of our questions, yours and ours, we don't know yet.
I think, you know, for, for a project like this, we can't just have a, a single meeting with a single packet and move forward, and, you know, it's, it's going to take time to flush everything out.
Once we have all the pieces.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to accomplish, and to keep everybody in the loop during that process.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with Court that this probably won't happen in one meeting. So, I mean, when, when everything is presented as a completed packet, it's probably going to take more than one meeting to, to get through all of it. It's not a slam dunk.
I have a point order. It was identified that you were considering the method to go regarding the SEQA. Is that something that you're being asked to actually make a decision on, or discuss? Like, you're not discussing that or making a decision on that?
My understanding is that the city has just told us that that's what they're going to do, and just for our information. But there's, there's no action item related to it.
Yeah, we're not asking the plan. The commission to make that determination.
Yeah, yeah, actually, the big action item was putting me in the hospital.
How's it feel? Appreciate that.
I'll talk about that in private. Yeah, that was relating to how does it feel? Other things we want to say about this so far?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, mostly just on the diagram. The, it shows like a new road going in the back. Is, was there plans to connect with the road that goes back behind Jewel Distillery? Is that what I'm seeing? Kind of, it looks like a road connecting to Live Work?
Yeah.
Like, is a second access point?
We talked about this going out this way, yeah. So, the city has gotten other grants in the past. They specifically got a planning and technical assistance grant from the state to look at how to potentially subdivide this vacant land north of Taylor Way. And one of the designs that came out of that showed internal access occurring somewhat in that manner. So, the city obtained some funding from Headwaters Fund to build a portion of that road section. It's right on the northern boundary of the Paradise Cave Building. So, essentially, what the architect is doing is saying the city's already kind of started internal access with that road section, so it would be advantageous to continue it down towards this project and improve internal circulation for these lots. I think that's essentially what's being shown.
So, this would be something that the builder would be providing then? They'd be making the road themselves? This isn't something that the city's providing in addition to?
Yeah, I, I don't know that it's proposed for Danco to do that as part of their project, but to serve these other sites in the future, if that, you know, were to occur, I assume it would be built at that time.
Yeah, so it's really dependent on those two parcels, not the Danco parcel.
Yeah.
And I, I want to go back to a comment that was made by the public that was the same as a comment that I had, and that is, there is just one elevator. And having worked in two different institutions during my youth, that combined public elevator with business elevator, that had questionable results. And so, I would think that when we get further down the line and we get a project put in front of us, I hope we'll see either two elevators, possibly one in each end. But even so, at this end, where the commercial space is on the third floor for the rooftop restaurant, and the cafe in the back, that there's something that's just for industrial, because especially in food service, things get messy, and to expect residents to be in an elevator that is also used for moving food and waste. And the waste is really what causes the worst.
Yeah.
So, I hope we'll see that in the future. That was one of my biggest comments on our packet today. Is there anything else that came up to the commission while you were looking through this, or things that came up before that you want to reiterate?
I'd say more as a point of clarification. I know we've discussed it multiple times, that the, the Danco project is separate from the housing element in and of itself. The Danco project fits within the structure of the housing element, but it is not a part of us passing that housing element or the requirements within the housing element. They're building this project to meet requirements of proposed housing element and the rules that the state's requiring us to follow going forward, correct?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much what you said is correct. So, the housing element update is its own process. We get a, you know, regional housing needs assessment allocation every planning cycle. Right now, we're in the sixth planning cycle, and the city's been allocated twenty-three units and has a carryover of eleven from the prior cycle. So, we're being asked to plan for thirty-four units in this current housing element update. And really, the purpose of the element update is, the city needs to demonstrate that it has adequately zoned sites with appropriate development standards, so it could accommodate its share of the regional housing need. If the Danco project were to happen, it would assist the city in meeting its arena allocation, but they're not tied together like that.
Yeah, I think that's an important point, is that, is they're not tied together.
Yeah, and so.
It doesn't have to be built to meet the allocation, though. The zoning just has to be in place.
That's right. You just have to plan.
It's very important to understand that, that the zoning is a whole separate issue from whether a developer decides to exercise the option to build something.
Right.
Completely two separate things.
Yeah, what the city's required to do with the housing element update is, is to show that it's adequately planned for its share of the regional housing need. One of the most important ways is identifying the vacant sites in the city that have the zoning that can accommodate different housing types, and appropriate development standards, as I noted. So, if the Danco project were to happen, or other projects in the city, we would document that through our annual progress reports, which we have to submit to the state to say what housing has been developed in the city. And then we would have to assign the different income categories we believe they fit under. The city's never been able to say that any of the units in town fit in the low or very low income categories, based on rents and, you know, purchase prices and things like that. So, the Danco project would be the first project to actually provide housing that would meet the low and very low income categories. It's also proposing some market rate units, which would probably meet the moderate, you know, that kind of thing. So, that's how we would count it if it happened. Really, it's the multifamily developments in the city that are going to meet a lot of times the low or very low or, or moderate. But it's only going to meet the low or very low typically, and if it's subsidized by some sort of funding from either the feds or the state. That's typically how affordable housing is down in California. So, usually, when we file these annual progress reports, it's either moderate or above moderate. So, single-family residences built in the last several years have all fell in the above moderate category. There have been some multifamily fourplexes and things that fell in the moderate category. But yeah, this will, if, if approved and built, would be one of the first projects to assist the city in meeting its share of the low and very low income unit categories.
So, I just have a few checklist things, just to, since people brought stuff up, I think it's just good to address it all, so that people feel heard. So, I mean, groundwater and geotechnical reports have been done, or in process, or complete?
A geotechnical investigation was prepared for the Botawat Community Project site, as well as a geologic hazards review. It contains recommendations for, you know, various parts of the proposed improvements, the foundation, paving, you know, all that kind of stuff. As those reports typically do, the project would be conditioned to make sure they're incorporating those recommendations into the design for the project. As far as site investigations, so the city got, was like an EPA Brownsfield grant to do a site investigation of the city-owned parcels north of Taylor Way. And so, that's available on the, the city's website, on the Powers Creek District homepage. And it showed that the site that Danco's proposing to develop is below regulatory screening levels for the constituents of concern. Things like petroleum hydrocarbons, things of that nature. The Soil and Groundwater Management Plan is a plan that's typically developed and implemented for development on former industrial sites, mill sites, things like that. In the case of the Botawat Community Site, we're not aware of any contamination over screening levels. So, really, that plan is like an inadvertent discovery protocol. It's like, we don't expect there to be anything, but if something were to happen to be found, you need to follow this plan. That's essentially what it is, similar to inadvertent discovery protocol for like cultural resources or that type of thing.
Someone digs up a tank, it sends everyone down a, a specific path.
And that, that Soil and Groundwater Management Plan is available on the website as well.
And so, the other items I had on there, so, I mean, I, we've all heard this several times, but, I mean, it went out to review, to fire, and they had no concerns because of the new building codes.
Fire code, yeah.
Just asking you to reiterate what we've already talked about.
So, newer structures with, you know, meeting the new requirements for ingress egress with, you know, current fire suppression systems, fire hydrants, fire department connections, all that kind of stuff, are typically easier for these departments to serve than older, you know, structures that don't have those type of improvements and don't meet current code, and that was some of what was indicated in our discussions with the fire district.
And then what about Water Quality Control Board? We haven't talked about that. Do they have jurisdiction there?
As far as, like, you know, direct physical impacts to waters of the state, which is their jurisdiction, there's no permits needed for this project because of impacts of waters of the state, like a, you know, a waste discharge requirement, or a Section 401 permit under the Clean Water Act and that type of thing.
That alteration occurring or anything?
That would be CDFW. However, anytime you're developing a site where you're disturbing more than one acre of property, you are required to obtain a construction general permit, which requires all sorts of erosion and sediment control measures, so you're not impacting water quality during construction. The city also has a grading ordinance, which requires an erosion and sediment control plan. So, really, they'll probably have to kind of prepare two, or it could be at the discretion of, say, the, the building department to allow the SWIP, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, that would be prepared for the CGP, to substitute for the city's requirements for. to substitute for the city's requirements for erosion and sediment control plan. But that's the primary, uh, requirement that the water board has that would apply to the project because they're disturbing more than one acre.
Just out of curiosity, does the city grading plan sit on top of the counties in terms of level of compliance? Do you know?
Could you rephrase that?
Like, is it, is it, is it stricter than the counties?
I don't necessarily know that it's stricter. It's based on the city of Arcadas, um, because they have a, a really straightforward one that was easy to understand. I would say it's substantially similar.
Similar, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the last one, and then I'll be done for a while, is I'm just kind of curious, since it was brought up, and I don't want to get into the contractual stuff or anything, but what is the impact, um, or is there a known impact on water supply? But I'm not interested in the contractual.
Right, right. Um, the city has plenty of water supply. Um, they built a new tank, uh, when they, they planned for the industrial park that was intended to serve the industrial park. Well, that park was never fully developed. So the city has plenty of water. Um, in, in the, whatever form of secret document that's prepared for the project, we'll analyze the adequacy of services and utilities to serve the project. So you would see, uh, more detailed information about exactly what, you know, peak month water use is and how much capacity the city has and, you know, things of that nature, estimates of water use for the project, that kind of stuff. But yeah, water is not an issue. And, and you'll also see that discussed in the city's housing element update, because you're required to look at, uh, utilities in there as well.
Uh, there was mention of sewage, and I know we've talked before with regards to the fact that the city does need, uh, additional upgrades, and we've talked about that that's, uh, going to be on the builder in certain instances. Is that something we're looking for this one, that any increase to our sewage capacity is going to be required for them to accommodate with upgrades?
Yeah, no, good question, and that's an important item. So, the city has planned improvements to its wastewater treatment plants, uh, that are relatively minor and would increase capacity, you know, pretty significantly by approximately a hundred and eighty residential equivalent units. And it would be done through installing additional aerators and doing electrical upgrades at the treatment plant. This is something that the city scoped out and estimated cost for and things like that, uh, years ago, I think around two thousand thirteen, when Mad River Brewery was wanting to double their production or significantly increase their, their production of beer. And the city needed additional capacity to accommodate that. So, uh, the city has had these planned and essentially has been waiting for the appropriate time to do it. They would have done it for the brewery, but, uh, for various reasons, they chose not to increase production in that way. Um, so the city's now prepared to do it for, uh, development in the Powers Creek District. Uh, you'll see in the housing element update, it discusses all of that. And then the state said, you know, we want a commitment on when you're going to do these improvements. And in there, there's an implementation program that commits the city to doing them within two years of adoption of the housing element update. And, yeah, that's, that's probably the, the best answer I can give you. Now, as far as, uh, what folks will be contributing to those upgrades, uh, they'd be paying a fair share contribution. So, um, you know, there has to be a nexus. The nexus is they need wastewater capacity. And then it needs to be proportionate, uh, to their project. So the city engineer would basically estimate the residential equivalent units of the project, and then that's what they would be charged for. The, kind of the equation, the basic equation for how that would happen would be stated in the condition of approval, uh, that would be in the resolution and the staff report for the project. So it was clear how the city's determining that fair share, um, cost allocation. Um, one other thing I would note is that there is an existing lift station, uh, right next to the Botawat Community Project Site. Uh, it needs some upgrades to be able to serve that project. So that's kind of your typical conveyance infrastructure type improvement that, you know, if you don't have the right elevations and things, you got to put a lift station in. It's mostly built. It needs, uh, you know, a cover over it, um, some electrical improvements and, and things like that. And, uh, specifically what's being done to it will also be identified in the conditions of approval for the project. And because it will primarily serve the Danko project, they would be responsible, uh, entirely for, for that particular improvement, as they would for extensions of laterals and things like that to serve the site.
Sure. Did I get you covered?
That's got me covered.
Helene?
Um, yeah, I wanted to ask, um, at this point in the application process, do we have an idea of the concessions that the developers requesting under the state density bonus law that may include building height setbacks and off-street parking?
Yeah, no, good question. I qualified that with a may because it wasn't clear to me specifically what they were asking, but it looked as though it might be those items. And that's why I wanted to disclose that uh, in the public hearing notice and in the agenda. So part of my job will be to go through these plans and ask for very specific information in that revised submittal, and that's, that's currently what I'm doing. So, you know, I know they're asking for a parking reduction, you know, that's clear. And there's limitations on the amount of parking you re- can require under state density bonus laws. We'll be looking at that. Uh, the height is another one. Um, are they meeting the, the height limits, uh, based on proximity to the trail? You can increase in height as you get away from the trail. And then setbacks, um, there's not supposed to be any development within twenty-five, uh, feet of the, the southern edge of the trail. It looks like they may be proposing, um, some bicycle parking, uh, maybe an ADA parking space and some paving. Otherwise, it's, looks to be open space landscaping, stuff like that. So those are the things that I was initially able to identify and why I noticed that in the public hearing notice and the agenda, but I, I need specific information from, from the applicant, their architect, to be able to adequately describe what's being requested. It's not enough just to say, well, they want concession for height. What you need to say, the height required is this, and here's what they're asking for, you know, so.
Okay.
Court?
Um, no, I think that's all I had.
Okay.
One more thing. Just, so just out of curiosity, what, um, and this, you may not know the answer to this, but in general, um, because there's a, um, there's been comments about, you know, the scale of the project?
Yeah.
Can you just compare the footprint of the brewery complex to the footprint of this project roughly? And they don't seem massively different.
Yeah, I mean, obviously not exactly the same, just in height. Uh, this project, I think, proposed to go up to forty-two feet. I think the brewery building may be somewhere between twenty-five and thirty. I don't, I don't know exactly. But when you look at the length and the width, um, the brewery buildings, you know, two hundred and fifty or something feet long and, you know, seventy feet wide or something like that, and just proportionately, if you took that and kind of put it in place of this, there's some similarities, but of course, you know, there's a little more space to this. It's different shape, uh, it's, it's taller, you know, things like that. But there are some larger buildings currently, um, you know, in the, the former industrial park, business park, now Powers Creek District, like the Calgon Carbon Facility, Blue Lake Power, you know, uh, the brewery, things like that.
Anything else, Court? I'll just throw in one more thing. As they proceed with their plans, we should pay attention to, uh, bathrooms, um, supplying bathrooms for the cafe, residence common area, and the rooftop restaurant, because those aren't on, on these plans yet. So those would be things that we would need to know. And those commercial spaces, of course, have different requirements than probably the residential common space would.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's still a lot that needs to be flushed out.
A lot, oh yeah, a lot, yeah.
I mean, this is just very conceptual.
It's better than the last one. We didn't even know what it was going to look like. So, yeah. And Gary, you said that we wouldn't be continuing this after this. We're just going to wait till they come forward with, with more?
Yeah, yeah, that's the idea. So at this point, we would have had two informational public hearings just to keep the, the public aware of what's going on with the project. We've got a town hall meeting, actually held one last year too, talking about the Powers Creek District. So, um, at this point, it's time for staff to dig in and work with them on getting a complete application. And once we have that, then we can use that to have our project description, which ultimately would be analyzed in whatever type of secret document that's prepared. And there was, uh, you know, a number of comments about cumulative impacts. So whether the project was found to be exempt, whether it was an initial study or whether it's an EIR, you have to consider cumulative impacts in all, all levels of secret review. So that, uh, issue would be addressed.
Good. Would that also address the potential for, um, uh, more access than just Taylor Way? You know, Pepe's property was mentioned. Uh, I know that came as a topic at the, at the informational meeting.
Yeah, if you look at the, the general plan under the circulation element and possibly other elements, that was proposed in the past as an alternative, uh, access route to the industrial park. And, uh, my understanding is that the Blue Lake Rancheria is, um, very much opposed to that idea. And I don't think that has changed.
All right. Anything else from?
Uh, just one more thing. Um, so you mentioned that, um, once we get a complete package and there are potentially conditions of approval, the wastewater treatment specifics, uh, specific improvements would be noted there. Is that also where these other improvements that are mentioned here would be, um, further specified, like the improvement of the creek trail, pedestrian improvements, um, at Taylor Way and Hatchery? Um, would that be, um, would that be included in the application that we consider next, the completed application? Or something that gets worked on later when we have, or when we're ready for conditions of approval?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, so mostly it would be articulating the conditions of approval, because these aren't things the applicant's proposing. They're things that the city is asking for as benefits of the project, um, which, you know, they'll need to be, um, state funding and other sources that would help pay for these things. But these are additional requirements that the city wants to place on the project to get, you know, benefits, not only for the project, but the community as well. So, um, in the conditions of approval, it would identify the improvement and just relevant information. What is it? Where is it? Who's responsible, et cetera?
Okay, thanks.
All right. Good, Court?
Yep, I'm good.
Good, man, good. All right. Well, let's move on to the next degemided. Six, um, continued public hearings slash discussion, amendment of the Blue Lake General Plan Housing Element for the sixth planning cycle, two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-seven. Update on element amendment process. Gary?
Sure. So, um, you as well, the public have probably noticed there wasn't anything, uh, in the agenda packet for this item.
No.
Uh, because really I gave a presentation at the last meeting and our current draft housing element is out there. It's available. You guys might have, you know, copies already from the last meeting. Um, it's on the city's website if anyone wants to see it. So at the last meeting, I kind of laid out what the next steps would be. And really the most important one right now is working with HCD to address any further comments that they may have before we take that document through the adoption process. And that adoption process would, once we, uh, they've told us, this is pretty good to go, you know, we would complete a secret document, circulate that for public review. And then once that's occurred, then we would bring the element, secret document, et cetera, to the planning commission. So you could make a recommendation to the city council. Council would have the final action on adoption of the housing element update. And then after it's adopted, uh, then it would be submitted to HCD for them to send the letter ideally that says we are in substantial compliance with state housing law, which is something we've been waiting for, for a long time. The city has not achieved that since two thousand four. Uh, that was the last one that I worked on with, with Rick Platts. So, uh, today, we received, well, I, I emailed the state today. I do it every week. They're busy and they're not super responsive. So, um, I contacted them and I got a response back from the head of the housing policy division, who said that the assigned person was too busy and he's taking it on personally. So, um, later this afternoon, I received his comments, and there's not a lot of them. And I have a meeting with them tomorrow to hash those out. And we're thinking if the next week or so, we'll have them kind of giving us the go-ahead to go through the adoption process.
Oh, wow.
So that was very exciting. Uh, before the meeting tonight, I was, uh, reviewing through the comments and kind of preparing for the meeting tomorrow. They may ask for a few revisions to some of the programs. They may ask for another program or two. We'll see. But ultimately, I mean, we're ninety-something percent of the way done. Uh, they, they consider us to be very close, so that's, that's good.
That is good.
It's a heavy lift.
It is, yeah, it is. Since two thousand four. Wow.
The city has adopted one in two thousand nine, but that was the last time the city's even adopted one. That one was not certified.
Right. Any questions about, about that? Okay, all right. Uh, number seven?
You might want to open that up for public comment, if there's anybody else to comment.
Is there any public comment for, for that?
Uh, Kent Swarovski, uh, I think what you're going to find is your housing element does include, uh, your housing, which is totally, not totally. A significant portion of it is dependent upon your ozone housing. If you go to your pages, I believe forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty and whatnot, a significant portion of those are in one area. And, uh, part of what I had noticed in here was something that the city hasn't done that it should do as far as affordable housing i- is the, um, the ADUs. That has not been promoted in Blue Lake. And that's the kind of thing, I know people in this room have said, Kent, I'd love to have where my, my, my dad can come live. We'd build one for him. That's the most affordable housing, because he's probably not going to pay anything. So I think we could, we could actually, with any kind of major promotion of the ADUs, satisfy all of our affordable housing needs. And it's totally dispersed without, within the city. And that's what's very important. When you come to housing, they don't like to see what all of the people in a certain economic group be put in one little pocket. And there's a very negative term regarding that particular thing, and, uh, Mandy gets kind of irritated when I use, but, but it's the poverty pocket. They want to see all of us live together of all different economic groups. And that's a very strong thing. And the city really needs to put, I believe it's a, a Q-zone over the top or a zone showing where you can put ADUs. They need to enable us to do that economically through support. And this is mentioned in, in the housing element you have here. I also wanted to mention that, uh, the, the, uh, the Danko project, not by Danko name, I thought I saw it there once, but is actually listed in here as far as, as far as describing the project. It's in your housing element. So that's directly part of what you're bringing forth. And I, I strongly recommend, you know, I didn't have time to read the whole thing, but those were a few things that I came away from. Uh, the public would like to see ADUs encouraged as, as suggested here. I strongly recommend that you folks, uh, get involved. Now, the other thing is with your housing element. Number one, your housing element has to be consistent with the general plan and zoning. That's one of the first things you'll find in here. And if, if your general plan and your zoning is not internally consistent, which I brought the examples of that there, there's no way that housing element can be consistent with it. So, uh, no matter what, I'm, I'm glad to see somebody else is, is working from the state and moving forward with it. But I, I still think that this could be challenged based upon the basis that it's not consistent. You have to have that foundation, plain and simply. And I wouldn't be optimistic. I mean, it's been a long time. The city basically said, to heck with, to heck with the state. We're not going to worry about this for the timeframe, I think for two cycles or something. We just basically shined them. And now I think it's really important that we get this done right and enable the people who want to have affordable housing for either your eighteen-year-old kid, who you don't want to have in the house, you don't want to have out of your reach, you want to be able to have in the ADUs. And, uh, many people throughout the state feel this is the future of affordable housing. It's not these large complexes, uh, with very large footprints. And when we talk about footprints in this or anything else, I, three minutes left. Thank you for having the opportunity to speak. No problem.
Yep. So what, sorry, do we want to see if there's any additional public comment?
Yes, additional public comment?
Go ahead, Matt.
Matt Watson, more on the Blue Lake.
First of all, I really appreciate how comprehensive you're being, but you're coming up with things that I didn't even think about, the bathrooms and the elevators and all that. And I have one more to add. One of our senior most postal service workers at the post office, I was chatting with her, and she seemed to believe that apartment complex would have to have its own bank of P O boxes. And someone would have to pay for a postal worker to service it, you know, to actually come and fill them and empty them, post office boxes. I don't know if that's true or not. She said, we don't have room for it here. We don't have the staff. So I, I've seen a lot of big apartment complexes, either by the manager's office or somewhere. They have their own banks. Everybody has their own key.
Hey, Matt, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Do we have to keep this to the agenda item?
Yeah, we do.
Because we're going back to the previous agenda item. It's been closed.
Oh, good point.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're on the housing element.
All right, well, I was just, you know.
So I'd recommend, you know, sending that as a public comment.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I mean, if you wanted to relate it to the housing, yeah, in the housing element.
Gee, gee, you had your hand up, Gee. Go ahead, Marty.
Okay, um, I'm still on up on the sides. And so instead of expressing myself, I'd like to ask a question. And hopefully it can get answered. Maybe it can dispel some of what I'm feeling, but how did it come about that we only needed thirty-four, but now it's forty-three?
I think we're in the same realm.
Okay, same, same circumstance. We're on to a different i- agenda item now. So you're going back to the, um, to the Danko. And I'd recommend- And I recommend, you know, formulating your question or your comment.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can attempt to formulate it for, so. I think what she's saying is that the state's asking us to plan for thirty-four units, why are we proposing or entertaining applications for more than that? I think is essentially.
That fits in, that fits in with the agenda.
Right, right, okay.
So, so I would say essentially, the arena allocation is the minimum the state is asking the city to plan for. And in no way is saying that if more than that was built, it would saturate the housing market, there'd be some negative impacts to the community in that regard. Uh, the state would love to see communities build more housing than their arena allocation. And you know, there's private property all over this town, there's city-owned property that could have housing developments. And we would not present it to the planning commission saying, you know, this can't be approved because it exceeds our arena allocation. That's, the state would uh, would not be favorable to that.
Also does it, sorry, but doesn't it also accommodate future requirements to maybe impose upon? Say we could use it for future housing element update, say we've already accommodated this many?
That's a nuance and I'm, I'm not sure they'll allow you to count something done in one cycle for a future cycle. They're gonna give you a fresh arena allocation, they're gonna ask you to plan for that new allocation.
Sure, but if, if they, if they did that, right, and we were already there, right? Cause people had built up to that point, like you said, we're not gonna tell people not to build affordable housing. So if more affordable housing was completed past our making this cycle, then they, that, that would work for the next cycle.
They don't typically do a carryover, no.
Oh really?
I think the biggest thing to understand is we're so deep in the hole on housing.
Well, I understand, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't work both ways, so if you don't plan for it, it carries over. If you get more housing in your allocation, it doesn't.
Okay.
We're gonna just still keep getting allocations.
Yeah, I mean, the state views this.
Above and beyond whatever we have.
They view this as essentially an emergency to try and produce affordable housing. So any extra, they're not, they're not letting jurisdictions off the hook for future allocations.
Okay, interesting. Alright.
You have one more public comment?
Oh yeah, sorry, I was lost in thought, what to write down in my piece of paper.
Catching mentions of Blue Lake. I have uh, letters, I don't know if um, for each of you, I wanna add two and um, it is about Article thirty-four of the State of California Constitution. Uh, it's my understanding if, uh, for low-income housing, affordable housing in, in the state of California due to Article thirty-four, um, the state of California, which was passed in nineteen fifty. Um, if there is going to be uh, uh, low-income housing developed in a city, the citizens of the city uh, are um, entitled to vote if they want to have uh, the development in the city. This is due to, to tax increase. The development would cause street uh, improvements, sewer improvements, water improvements. Um, and the idea with Article thirty-four is that if uh, the low-income housing requires uh, federal, state, or local uh, financing to develop it, then that is when the vote of the citizens of the city comes into play. And I haven't seen that uh, discussed in any of the meetings, so I brought this to your attention. And then I went through the housing um, element and I have a few paragraphs that it notes that there is indeed uh, uh, low-income housing that is being required. So then I would think that that would put in the Article thirty-four um, law that uh, we as citizens get to vote on this development. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, and I did put in that letter, just for everybody, is that if the, if the uh, the planning commission could advise staff and the city council on this issue, um, maybe look up more information for yourselves instead of just looking at what I've provided. Um, and develop an, an opinion on this for the uh, city staff and the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Jeff Landis. Uh, as I've been told before, I've been heard, but I guess I'll be heard again. Um, it's from the city council tells me I say the same thing all the time. Um, but if we just heard that, it doesn't carry over for low-income housing, then why are we, why is it being proposed or, or potentially planned for anything bigger than what's required? If it's not required, that could make the project smaller, lesser impact, et cetera, et cetera. So I just, that's what I just heard, there is no carryover. So, wanted to bring that forth as maybe that's, you know, maybe that goes before y'all as planners to, again, engage with could be more constructive project that would maybe meet the demands and um, fit the scope better.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else? Any comments from our group?
No. So, well, yeah, so I, I don't think the planning commission has the authority to size a project if it meets code.
Nope.
That's not, we don't have that ability. If, if, if a, if a contractor or, you know, a builder is meeting code, they're meeting code. And, and if we um, step in and, and ask them um, to change a project like that, we're making ourselves potentially legally responsible for that, that's not our ability to do that.
Mentioned that for plan for sizes, that's all, again, I don't know exactly what you, um, what your purview is.
Yeah.
Just putting it out there. You may wish to get a legal counsel opinion on your statement there, it's just a recommendation.
Alright, then I'll just stop talking, the way we're gonna go.
Well, the city attorney has previously advised the planning commission on what their purview is.
Yeah, we were very, very.
So, you know, it's, is it consistent with the general plan zoning code, CEQA and other state laws, like state density bonus law, things like that? If the planning commission were to say, I, I know it meets the, the rules, but I don't like it, I think it's too big, or a variety of other subjective opinions and use that as a basis for denial, it could potentially open the city up to liability. And that's what the city attorneys have advised the commission in the past. Um, I would add, there's laws like the Housing Accountability Act, which kind of lay out the processes, like consistent with general plan, consistent with zoning. And if so, then it essentially should be approved. Um, except as otherwise allowed under state density bonus law, when they can't ask for increased density or concessions from certain development standards and things like that. And this project, the, well, I shouldn't talk about it because we're not.
You don't know yet.
We don't know what a project is yet.
I, I'm going off agenda item now, I apologize.
Right, no apologies.
So in terms of the ADUs, I, I'm, you know, I'm pretty clear on how the ADUs work. It sounds like they're still, I mean, it's in the housing element. I don't think that.
We spoke about it a lot last.
Yeah, I don't think the city is actively holding back anyone from developing ADUs and so, um.
I think I spoke last time and you said, we got one last year and you said, you're hoping on an increase for even more that three would be.
I mean, people just aren't.
Yeah.
Asking for them, I mean, it's available to everybody.
The, the first draft of the housing element update, I think it projected twenty in the current planning period. And the city respondent said, uh, you have no basis for that projection, you've gotten one in the last several years. So revise this with something more realistic. So I basically revised it to essentially say one every year for the remainder of the planning period. And so far, it looks like they, they feel that's reasonable. There is a lot of additional interest in ADUs, but people aren't following through with them for whatever reason. There's really good information out there, the county, um, I think they got a grant, hire consultants to prepare like an ADU calculator. So you can go on there, pick your community, pick the type of unit, all of that, and it gives you estimates of costs and all that type of stuff. It's a really uh, unique tool and, and we try and tell folks about this as much as possible. But as far as the city's ADU regulations, um, there's, they are so out of compliance with state law that they've found them to be null and void. And so what we're proposing in the housing element update as a program is just to revise those to refer to current state law for ADUs. And so as that changes, the city will be implementing it as it changes. And so HCD is available to answer interpretation questions, clarifying questions about state ADU law. And I, I use that frequently, I'm often sending them questions. But yeah, the state has gotten really aggressive in promoting these and reducing barriers through developing ADUs. And the city still has the ability to have an ADU ordinance that's less permissive or more permissive, whatever the city wants to do. But at this point, the city's like, we don't want to have to keep updating this, so let's just refer to state law, you know, essentially. And a number of other smaller communities are kind of doing the same thing, so you don't have to constantly be amending things as state law changes.
It doesn't, just doesn't seem like there's been a lot of interest.
There's been a lot of conversations with people.
But no, yeah.
Yeah, not many people fallen, following through. Um, I think some of the easier ones to do, you know, I have a detached garage, I have a shed, those conversions are more likely to happen than new detached ADUs.
Right.
But either way, I mean, we, we do our best to let people know, um, you know, what the rules are, how much easier it's become and, and we try and promote them. Uh, you'll see one of the programs in there as if we lag on that projection, I noted, um, you know, one every year for the remainder of the cycle. We have to look at our, our rules essentially, we have to look at other ways to potentially incentivize it. Um, so there is a program in there that they asked us to include if we're lagging behind the projection in the housing element.
Um, when people do propose, bring projects forward for ADUs, do they typically identify them um, in terms of what they're going to make income-wise? Whether it's gonna be low-income, moderate, or above?
They're never low-income.
No, they don't typically do that, um, but you know, the smaller they are, potentially the more affordable they would be or the lower rents, you know, the bigger.
Unfortunately, that's not what we're seeing though now, we're starting to see those prices really increase. Uh, we recently had a unit that was two hundred and forty square feet, it was a shed conversion, listed at twelve hundred dollars a month. And that's pretty typical right now, two bedrooms right now are listing for twenty-three hundred in the city.
And there's no way.
Nothing affordable.
And Ken mentioned, you know, I think it was you, Ken, that mentioned like family and stuff, if they're building it for family, they don't prob- probably put any of that stuff down anywhere, right? Cause they're just building it for their mother, for their father, a brother or whatever, so it doesn't really be, it's not thought of as an income generating.
We still need to know what they could charge for it, you know, and so.
Whether or not you are.
We'll sometimes contact them or we'll go look at the unit and be like, you know, this, this looks similar, that it would be, you know, whatever rent, you know, type of thing. And that we have to fit it in a particular category. Um, so we still have to do it regardless of how they intend to use it.
So when staffs, sorry, one thing, in, in, in your opinion, what, what do you think the barrier is? Like, why isn't there follow-through? Is there concern that they're older units and people are gonna get code-checked? Or like, what's the, like, what's the barrier?
I think it's the construction costs. Construction costs are extremely high. It's like, what, almost three hundred dollars a square foot right now for residential construction? I mean, it's just, it's so cost prohibitive. I mean, we push ADUs a lot, um, there's a lot of concessions now with the state, um, especially when it comes to utilities and waivers of connection fees. Um, I think ADUs are great, it's a great option and opportunity, but the construction cost is just extremely high right now.
And then conversions and remodels is even higher, it's way more than three hundred dollars, if they go into an old house, it's way more than that.
Yeah, and there, there is a trend of people asking about manufactured home ADUs. We actually had one put on Potter Lane recently. Um, so folks are seeing that as a more affordable way to do new detached ADUs.
And of course, none of this, I probably shouldn't even say this, but none of this um, has anything to do with the people in our, in our community that build things without permits altogether.
Well, there might be more ADUs than we're aware of, that's a possibility.
I would be willing to put money on that.
As well as uh, larger, larger homes being split into multiple units, which we do encourage, but it's just not aware of everybody doing it.
I have a question on the ADU, when, when it's time for it. Um, so if you were to build out of a garage, a unit, it is for a family member, does that qualify as an ADU or does it have to be rented?
It's attached to the house, so it wouldn't be an ADU.
Well, depends.
No, it's a separate building out of the garage.
If it meets the requirements for a separate independent living unit and criteria for an ADU.
I thought you were saying like attached to the house garage, just build it out.
And, and I assume that's something that's on the city web, website or other building things, like how you do that and whether it's the code or whatever, you know? Because again, yeah, people, you know, convert things and stuff like that, but I'm curious about it as to, you know, if we wanted to make something in our garage for a family member, does that count with the ADU counters? Because it's not rendered, it doesn't.
Yeah, if it meets the criteria, it's a separate independent living unit and the criteria for an ADU.
Okay, so it's still in that case, okay.
Yeah.
And then that would be obviously subject to, you know, local building codes and all that kind of stuff. And is that something that with sewage and water, that you can do that on a, you know, a lot in, in the, within the city?
Yeah, the state's made it easier in regards to water and sewer. Any sort of fees have to be proportionate to the additional water use or wastewater discharge. You have the ability to use the lateral that goes to say the main house for the ADU, they used to have to be separate. So they've done a bunch of things to lower, to lower those costs. And if anybody's interested, there's an ADU handbook that the state has on their website and this is what I refer everybody to because.
California state.
Would you literally just look up like ADU handbook, HCD or, you know, anything related to that and it'll pop up on their website. And it's got a frequently asked questions and it goes through all these different, you know, scenarios and, and it's, it's pretty informative. And they also will answer questions if you send them emails, they'll, they'll answer specific questions you may have.
Yeah, but I didn't even know that was like something that was possibly to cut your garage and grandpa or, you know, sign something. Okay.
There's a lot of ways to do an ADU. There's also what's called a junior accessory dwelling unit, where you could take a bedroom in the house, five hundred square feet or less, and have that be its own, its own independent kind of living space, yeah.
You said something about waiving sewer or water fees?
Not necessarily waiving, but making sure whatever fees are charged are proportionate to the actual use. And that can be determined by square footage, by number of fixtures, there's a variety of methodologies they use to determine that. But you can't just say, an ADU is equivalent to a single-family residential unit, that's what they're trying to avoid because that cost is more.
Right. Essentially prorated.
It's, it's, that's exactly what it is.
And if it was coming off the uh, existing uh, house, you know, allotment of sewage and water, which go into that overall, whatever the minimum, you know, usage is, something like that, right? It would be a proportion or would, I guess what I'm saying is that you have, you have a minimum of like how much water and sewage, you know, you're a certain tier and this and that. If that thing is added on, it's essentially sort of like just a separate bathroom in the house or something.
So Jeff, I would recommend rather than that, continue. If you've got questions, the city staff would be happy to uh, either answer your questions during regular business hours or tell you, you know, a good place to go find that information.
It's a deal.
And if I could add to that, um, the city pays for the, the consultant city planner myself to have office hours twice a month. It's like nine-thirty to noon on the second and fourth Wednesday. And oftentimes, there's appointments open, so anybody who's interested could come.
Thank you for the info.
Yeah, no, no, no worries, it's just easy to have a conversation, so.
Yes.
Alright, so, are we ready to move on?
I'm ready.
Okay. Um, so number seven miscellaneous planner items, anything for us, Gary, or?
Not really.
Okay, alright. Um, number eight, uh, do we have anything for Gary? Okay, number eight, upcoming planning, yes?
With the discussion we just had, as far as future meetings, I highly recommend you talk to staff about agendizing the ADU topic so that we can participate and you can get educated. The county has some wonderful plans and, and we don't, I can't find anything on the website. But anyway, I, I would think that's important enough to agendize for, for future meetings, I believe we might want to.
Okay, alright, um, so noted. Um, so we have, the next three months, our meetings are July seventeenth, August twenty-first, and September eighteenth. And I know I've already said that I'm gonna miss the August and September meetings and potentially the seventeenth if I can't get out of my commitment on that day. How about in court, you've already said August is really bad for you.
The first two I don't know, for sure, I mean, the twenty-first is, I, we'll see how good the weather is in Alaska, maybe I'll be back.
Because it's so good?
May, if it's good, I'll be back.
Oh, okay.
If it's not good, I won't be back.
Oh, I see, okay, alright.
But this July one may be hard for me to accommodate because I think we're making travel plans around the fact that the whole month of July, we don't have daycare since Humboldt State is moving their childcare facility. So, anyone who has their child there has no daycare for a whole month. So, we're probably playing on, yeah, travel plans to accommodate that.
Okay, alright, Elaine?
I will be here for all of these three meetings.
You're awesome, you should be in the hot seat.
Yeah, see.
I didn't want to push that earlier because you just came back under the commission.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Throwing you in that fire pit was probably a. Throwing you in that fire pit was probably a mean thing to do.
So, um, you know, probably it'd be good if we, a few weeks in advance of these, um, normally scheduled meeting dates. If staff surveyed the commissioners, see if it's available. And if we don't have a quorum, then we would throw out some alternative special meeting dates to, to try and hold meetings. Assuming there's items that need to come before the commission.
Yep.
Right.
And I, I believe, you know, the city will obviously be working on trying to find another planning commissioner as well.
Right, good. Yeah, I was gonna bring that up as well. But, um, yeah, so I don't know if you wanna put in the notes. I, I will be in Ma- in Maine from July thirtieth to September twenty-third.
That's way too long of a vacation.
It's only part, it's only partially a vacation.
That's gonna be pretty sticky in Maine.
Uh, the July part will. The August part should be okay. Um, and, uh, September is usually lovely because everybody's gone. So it's, it's nice. Yeah, alright.
So is there an alternate date that we can talk about right now for the July meeting? If it looks like we're not gonna have a quorum or if there are too many uncertain dates, because that's confusing for the public. So I know it's, when we change things last minute, people don't have it on their schedule and whatnot. So is there anything that we're sure about right now for July, since that's the next one coming up? Or no, sounds like no. Who's for sure not going to be here for July seventeenth?
It's almost certain. I've arranged remote work stuff so we can go visit relatives elsewhere and they can watch the show.
Sure, sure.
If I, yeah, and if I can't get out of mine, then I won't be here. It's all a matter of asking for permission.
Okay.
So Bob, you said July thirtieth through September twenty-third. So would you be available like the twenty-fourth of July?
Oh, would I be available? I should be, but, oh, wait, July. Let's go back to jail, July. What was the date?
Go back to jail?
Well, you said July thirtieth through September twenty-third.
You know, there's a lot to read in all this. So what did you say? Cause.
The twenty-fourth?
Yes, I am here the twenty-fourth.
I'll email you. I have, uh, this is not my work phone, so.
But yes, I will definitely be here.
Actually, you could change maybe the seventeenth through the twenty-fourth.
Yep.
When are you gonna be granted or denied permission?
Well, I actually called today and, uh, didn't get an answer. So I'll probably call Wednesday again and say, alright, do you have somebody to fill my shoes? Cause if they don't, I gotta go. I, it's a voluntary thing, but I did it months and months and months ago. It's so busy being retired.
Please.
Sorry, I had to throw the plea mat.
I, do you need a Kleenex?
It was a joke. Um, yeah, the twenty-fourth would work. Alright, anything else about tho- those dates?
Oh, yeah.
Um, number nine, and I no longer get to do this. Uh, unless there's anything else that needs to be talked about. Someone else has to do my.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?